God, indivisible, with liberty. Thank you. Be seated, and we will open our meeting. Before we get started, I think one of the most important things the commission would like to express is the gratefulness to be back in this room, thanks to Andrew Gash and team to make, certainly under Kevin's leadership, for making this possible and bringing back, really, what has been in the 70s state of the art to the current state of the art in both screens as well as mics. And I hope you can recognize immediately that there's just not a bad place to sit in this room. Ton of work. If you had seen the wiring and the controllers that made all this possible as they were going through the process of this, it was mind-boggling. And I'm a geek. I like that stuff. And I think, holy cow. So for that team that has made all this possible, we want to give a great round of applause. All right, we will get started. And the first thing we have this morning is to do proclamations. We have two, General Aviation and Lineman Appreciation Day. And we're always looking, we always look forward to this each year. So I will come out and start those. Whereas Florida's aviation system is comprised of more than 125 public-use airports, supporting our communities, businesses, and agriculture. And whereas Polk County is home to four municipally-owned public-use airports located in Barto, Lakeland, Lake Wells, and Winter Haven. And whereas Lakeland-Linder International Airport is one of the top 100 busiest airports in the United States, contributing $1.5 billion annually in an economic impact in our city. Whereas Lakeland is the home of Sun 'n Fun's Aerospace Expo, which is the second most significant aviation event in North America, and will be celebrating its 50th Aerospace Expo, April 9 through 14, 2024, as we go forward. And whereas Lakeland is the home of the Aerospace Center for Excellence and the Florida Air Museum, whose mission is to engage, educate, and accelerate the next generation of aerospace professionals through programs for students of all ages. And whereas the Central Florida Aerospace Academy in Lakeland and Winter Haven have made the opportunity to begin an aviation career available and affordable to public school students throughout the entire country, and is a model for other school systems as well. And whereas Lakeland is the home of Travis Technical College, Polk State College, and Southeastern University's aerospace programs, which are training the next generation of aerospace professionals. And whereas Lakeland is the home to the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration's Aircraft Operations Center, which you know as NOAA, whose aircraft operate throughout the world, providing a wide range of capabilities, including hurricane reconnaissance and research that directly support emergency management decisions and scientific advancement. That's all you do. And whereas Lakeland-Linder International Airport is home to various other aerospace businesses that employ over 3,000 people, while providing flight training, aircraft maintenance and repair, manufacturing, air cargo, defense contracting, and law enforcement services, supporting our national interests. Another for H. William Muttz, Mayor of the City of Lakeland, and on behalf of the entire commission, do hereby proclaim August 2023 as General Aviation Appreciation Month in the City of Lakeland, and has created this proclamation as a result.
Just want to say thank you to the commission and the community for being great supporters of aerospace and aviation in the City of Lakeland and the county. We couldn't do it without all of our partners out there, and just really appreciative of the recognition.
Appreciative of the results. Quick picture. Here we have Lineman Appreciation Day. Tracy Moore of the Highland Heroes, Highline Heroes, and Lakeland Electric staff, and others that might be with her on up. No, I think it is so easy for us, and I'm going to read the proclamation, but it is so easy for us to take for granted, we'll center up, all the work that is done. Or the ones that stand in the gap. High risk, and the opportunities that we have to be able to have quick recoveries, then you make that happen. So in light of that, and in light of the costs that sometimes occur, proclamation. Whereas America's electric energy power comes from thousands of independently-owned and operated-generating power plant facilities. Whereas those power plants connect a complex electric grid comprised of over 5 million line miles of transmission and distribution lines, delivering energy to homes and businesses, churches, hospitals, and schools across America. And whereas the grid is maintained 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year during rain, cold, which of course seems like that's when it mostly is being maintained, hurricanes and tornadoes, is hardened to remain capable of withstanding any hazards that occur. And that hardening goes on all the time throughout the course of the year. Whereas this system of electric lines remains operational ready due to over 114,000 dedicated and skilled men and women known as electric line workers, who are dedicated technicians, serving electric utilities across America. And whereas electric line workers serve as a cohesive group and often highly effective teams in hazardous circumstances and rigorous conditions by responding within disaster areas to restore power to citizens' homes and businesses, working in a job classification ranked as one of the 10 most dangerous jobs, wherein 30 to 60 men or women lose their lives annually. And whereas Lakeland Electric's line workers have demonstrated their extraordinary dedication and skills, numerous awards and competitions held across Florida nationally, and are deserving of appreciation from Lakeland, the Lakeland community. And whereas line workers from Lakeland Electric are exceptionally dedicated and hard-working professionals who risk their lives daily, working in perilous situations, ensuring reliable electric energy arrives at Lakeland homes and businesses. And whereas it is most fitting and proper that the City of Lakeland set aside a special day to recognize and honor these dedicated professionals, I H. William Muttz, Mayor of the City of Lakeland, and on behalf of the entire commission, do hereby proclaim August 26, 2023, as Lineman Appreciation Day in the City of Lakeland, calling upon Lakeland citizens to be mindful of the dangerous work regularly performed in exacting conditions by these dedicated workers, and to show appreciation for these line workers throughout Lakeland at every opportunity. And so, hold this proclamation. Like to make any comments?
Mayor Muttz mentioned daily. It really is a daily thing. We think about these folks when hurricanes or big storms come through. But this is really a daily thing. Something goes out every day. We see it on those of us that are connected to the computer that can see the alerts go out. Something goes out daily, sometimes nightly, due to storms or due to critters that get places they shouldn't get. So something's out all the time. And these folks are out there when we're inside, when I'm inside enjoying 75, 78, I'm sorry, that's politically incorrect. I'm inside enjoying 78-degree weather. These folks are out 90-plus degree, 100-whatever with humidity and all. So, and they're out there doing this tough job, all of our linemen. So a lot of thanks and gratitude to the folks that we kind of just are able to forget about because they're out there doing their job. So, great proclamation, and thanks, guys.
Three, two, and... Out of backup. Morning. Full commission, new room, everybody's here, and so I'm so grateful for that. Well, we'll move into our agenda at this point. First of all, we have the opportunity to approve of our consent agenda. Is our motion approved?
For approval.
Second? And that consent agenda is the minutes, as you see on the front, and the other items that are asterisked throughout the agenda, all of which we have covered at, and the study meetings on Friday, if you have any individual questions about them. Is there any discussion by any commission members? Audience, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same, unanimously passes. By the way, Andrew, if you need our mics closer, just let me know in the process of this, and I'll be happy to accommodate that. Next, we have a request appeared from the general public, and this is really an exciting opportunity. Our A item on the agenda is happening, and this is on Stargel making a presentation. But our B item, there was a medical emergency, and so it's being withdrawn from today's agenda, and we won't have that. So Judge Stargel, if you'd like to make a few comments towards our headquarters needs and our new District 6, we'd love to hear it.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
When I started with, as a judge, almost 17 years ago, I never imagined I'd have the opportunity to start a new court. It doesn't happen often, and we've had the opportunity right here in the City of Lakeland to start the new Sixth DCA. I'm going to start with an interesting tidbit, just because when I was preparing this sheet, I was like, where in the statute was that headquarters language? So I did a search. You might know, there's four places in the Florida statutes that the word Lakeland shows up, the City of Lakeland. One of them is the Authorized Citrus Archives, another is in the Local Government and Tax section, your enterprise zone, and then our headquarters. Those are the four times that the City of Lakeland has made it into the statute. So about a year ago, and most of you know, you've seen it in the paper and followed this, but about a year ago, the legislature designated Lakeland to be the headquarters of the new Sixth DCA. For years, it had been the headquarters of the Second District Court of Appeals. And I don't want to be talking to anyone up here, because I know you all know this, but for anyone watching who may be saying, what is a District Court of Appeal? I'll go through the history in a few minutes, but we have our trial courts. We have both county judges and trial judges. And I had the opportunity to be a trial judge for almost 14 years before the governor appointed me to the Second District Court of Appeal a few years ago. Then you have the Supreme Court at the top. Back in the 50s, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a minute, the legislature decided we needed to have intermediate courts of appeal, so that cases would be appealed to them, and then could go to the Supreme Court. It kind of took the load off the Supreme Court. So about a year ago, after the legislature passed the statute creating the Sixth District Court of Appeal, we were all scratching our heads. We knew who was going to be on it, because they said, based on residents, who would be there. The district now runs, we picked up Orlando. So the old Second District Court of Appeal used to be Polk County all the way over to Pinellas County, all the way down to Naples. It was huge. We had more judges than anyone else. We had more area, more population. So that was the reason they carved this out. The Second is now going to be headquartered in St. Petersburg. They have the Tampa Bay area, basically down to Sarasota, and the greater Tampa Bay area. A lot of work went into getting this started. Off the ground, the Supreme Court put together a work group, and through many transition issues, I mean, the six of us as judges met together. They appointed a work group that had judges around the state, because it wasn't just the Six, it was all of the changes that happened within the First, the Fifth, the Second, and the Sixth, because all of our boundaries changed a little bit. But we had, obviously, the biggest hill to climb. First thing that we wanted to do, we had to hire a marshal. Now, the marshal in the District Court of Appeal is sort of like your city manager, or your chief operating officer in a business, and we wanted to get someone who knew what they were doing. Well, little did we know, our very first hire, which is Charlie Crawford, who's joined me today, was from the Fifth District Court of Appeal, had 10 years of experience, and was interested in making a change. And it didn't take us very long to say, okay, we're doing that. So our first hire had a lot of experience. From there, we had to hire a clerk, which is one of the primary roles, getting the cases moved around. The clerk for the Second District Court of Appeal was at a conference, and was letting people know what was going on. And lo and behold, this just speaks to Lakeland, Central Florida, and Florida in general. People want to be here. She was looking to retire. She was the clerk of the Arkansas Supreme Court. She was also over all of their appellate courts. And she wants to retire here. She interviewed. We hired her. So our first two hires were like, bang, bang, we've got a good group going. This is awesome. The third position we had was our central staff lead. We hired Sarah Corbett, who'd been with the Second District Court of Appeals. She's lived right here in Lakeland for many years. So we have a good team together. Altogether, we have about 75 employees, and about 50 of them will be headquartered right here in Lakeland. Now, a little bit of history. So in 1956, the legislature decided they were going to do these intermediate courts of appeal. So you had the First, which is up in North Florida, the Second, which was in Central Florida, headquartered here in Lakeland, and the Third, which was down in Miami. Added the Fourth in West Palm in 1978, the Fifth in Daytona Beach in 19, I'm sorry, the Fourth was in 65, and then the Fifth in 78, Daytona Beach, and then January 1, we now have Lakeland. So we are one of six municipalities throughout the state who have been granted the opportunity to be the headquarters for District Court of Appeal. Another interesting tidbit of information, when the Secretary of District Court of Appeal first convened, its headquarters were in the old Florida Citrus Commission Building, corner of Massachusetts and Main. I know that's another topic of discussion that's been, being had. But in 1961, they completed their first courthouse. It was out on 92 Memorial. They moved into the new courthouse that was later named the Lawton Child's Courthouse. Second opened a branch headquarters in Tampa after that, and the building here fell into disrepair and eventually was torn down. They moved the clerk's office and all of the remaining staff that weren't headquartered in Tampa over onto Main Street. And that's what happened when the legislature decided to create the Sixth. They designated this as our new courthouse, or our new headquarters for now. We don't have a courtroom facility there. We're using Florida Southern. I invite you all to come out a couple times a month. We're having oral arguments in the Historic Library there at Florida Southern. It's a neat place. Acoustics aren't quite as good as you have here and other places, but for right now, it's working. And then the Orange County Courthouse is letting us have hearings over in Orlando as well. There's a couple other things. I'm just here to present the need that we have for a suitable location to build a courthouse. We don't have any place in mind. Obviously, the downtown area is where courthouses work best. We have attorneys who will be coming to these oral arguments. They spend the night. They have dinner here, prepare for their arguments. And then we have our employees as well. The footprint that we will need will be somewhere in the three to five acres. We might be able to go a little less. We're not planning on building quite as large of a building as like the Second DCA just built over in St. Petersburg. And part of that is because the legislature, when they did this redistricting of the courts, one of the things they did is gave us a directive to operate efficiently through the use of leading technologies and innovation and workforce flexibility. And that was kind of a recognition of what's happened through COVID. We have a lot of employees who are working from home now. They're not there every day. We don't, you know, we're using something called hot desking, where clerks can come in, and they just plug in their laptop, and they have the carols there that they can all use. So besides that, I don't really have anything else, other than to answer your questions. I do plan to reach out to each of you, and I've already met with the mayor and a few of you in passing, but I plan to actually schedule meetings. Our Chief Judge Dan Traver would like to come along for some of those, and Charlie will probably come along as well. With that, I'll open to any questions you might have.
We had asked to have this kind of become the initial discussion for just getting in our thinking, you know, where... Questions in that regard?
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning. Judge Stargel, thank you for coming and presenting this to us this morning, because we have, we've heard of plans and possibilities, and we've talked about it. But I think this is the first time we've had a discussion on our agenda, so we appreciate that. For our city manager, I know we've talked about different sites in the past as options, and is that still something that we kind of have in possibilities in our downtown plans?
Probably two years ago now, when this first started being discussed, you'll all remember when Nicole Travis was here, we had looked at several locations around the city to try to identify a location where if the city were going to be the one to either sell or contribute land toward the development, where we would have some opportunities. And, you know, there were some sites that were previously represented in some of the early concepts for the Catalyst Plan that are kind of around the RP Funding Center downtown west area. And so that's probably, in terms of city property, the best we have available, but certainly open to other, you know, suggestions, or to take a look at anything else, if there are other areas. I'm hearing the downtown is probably desirable. And so again, that's probably about as close of an opportunity as we were able to identify.
Thank you. That's helpful, because again, we've had conversations, but just to have a discussion as a commission, what we may want to do. And Judge Stargel, you said, so most of the courthouses are in downtown areas. That's your, you would say that if we're looking, just thinking that sites and parcels sometimes are limited, and as city managers saying that we have limited options sometimes in downtowns, I'm just wondering, is there an option to expand, you know, that search a little bit?
I mean, an in-town location is obviously better. I mean, you're going to get, you know, hopefully, some law firms and other people. That's where they would want it to be, as opposed, like, the First District Court of Appeal in Tallahassee, for those of you that have the opportunity to ever drive by there, it's way out on the outskirts. They put it there, and it's huge. This will be nothing like that, but I think we learned from, or the court system learned from that. I mean, it didn't need to be that big and out there. But, I mean, we're open to whatever we need to do. I mean, obviously, the statute says Lakeland, and we want it to be in Lakeland. You know, there's a question, could it be greater Lakeland? Does it have to be right in the city limits? Yeah, I don't know that anyone has said, you know, the city limits, but it does say Lakeland, so for what, that's fair.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
But if you're picking, you like downtown area ideally.
I think it's good for our staff, like everyone else, be able to, you know, walk to restaurants, be part of the area down here. I mean, where we're at over there on Main is nice. It's close to things, but there's just not a lot of open land. And one of the reasons we wanted to talk to you all about that, I think Mr. Scherhouse said, you know, whether it's donated or bought. I mean, we're going to have money. The legislature, you know, they, one of the reasons also, Commissioner McCloud, that we haven't been here, we have to go through authorizations, obviously. So the Supreme Court has authorized this now as a project, and we've just gotten off the ground. But, you know, we're ready to move forward as soon as the legislature gives us the money. Like, the Second DCA found some state land, but they had to tear down an old building and do renovations. We're open to any of that, if there's places that you all find. And I think just so that it's part of the discussion, as you all are going through and having things go on over the next six, eight months. And obviously, we won't know until the spring whether and how much the legislature gives us.
You have 50 employees. You said that it'd be on-site. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, that would be their headquarters location. You know, they would be on-site variously.
I'm just trying to get a feel of parking spaces. Is that 75 spaces? Is that less?
Probably get by with fewer, because everyone's not there at the same time. We'd want some public spaces. One of the things, just for instance, the Fourth DCA, when they went into West Palm Beach, built their new building, one of the things they did is partnered with the city and other people, and as part of their agreement is, they built a parking garage that was adjacent to it, that all of these other organizations use. And that was kind of their contribution to get some land. And I don't know all of the details of that, but we're very flexible and open. Obviously, we'll have to get approvals for anything that we do, but we'd love to partner with you all, or if there's private land that you all can point us to, we want to start those discussions, so that as soon as we get funding, we're ready to move forward.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, that was, you know, part of the criteria when we were looking for potential, you know, sites, was parking. And so again, you know, at the RP Funding Center, kind of that area where we have a lot of parking available. But there's always been, going all the way back to that original Catalyst Plan, you know, the plans for other out parcel-type development that could happen there around the RP Funding Center, and then the option that was just suggested, where maybe the city and those other developments partner together when the time is needed to expand the parking there. But at least, initially, there's plenty of parking that we would be able to provide there in that area.
Mr. Scher, read.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for being here, Judge Stargel. I had heard, and maybe I read somewhere, but didn't the state appropriate around $51 million initially to do?
So when they passed the statute creating the Sixth, yeah, they allocated money for, the Second and the Sixth, but first, the governor and his staff wanted to have, you know, have us get up and running, know what we're doing. This past year, there was $6 million in there that was vetoed. We don't know all the details of that, but we've been assured, it's not that, because they don't want us to have a building, but, you know, politics or what else, whatever else is going on. We're, you know, we want to continue moving forward, and it's going to be asked for again this year, and we have every reason to expect that it'll be funded again. Whether it'll be funded like this past year, which was kind of exploratory funding, so that we can start on plans and things, or whether they'll go forward and say, this is it, here's your amount that you can start on. The Second was appropriated 50, and then came back for $9 million last year, which also could have been part of it, because we had that $9 million ask plus our Sixth. So they finished funding that one. So this next year, we'll start down the path of getting the funding for the Sixth.
Thank you. I think it's imperative that we have extra parking, because obviously, 75 employees and 15, but I'm not sure which one are full-time. But invariably, if it gets busier, we're going to need parking for people coming in, as well as... Same area, so, but that's, thank you for your answer.
Comments? Good comments. Other comments? Commissioner McCarthy.
Thank you, Judge Stargel, for being here. I just wanted to comment to my fellow commissioners. Three to five acres in the downtown corridor will be really difficult to do. So we just need to consider maybe, you know, expanding that radius outside. And when you talk about 50, and you alluded to the fact that a lot of people would be remote, I'm not sure, yes, parking would be critical, but at the same time, you know, if of those 50 ebbs and flows with any kind of remote working, we just have to be cognizant holistically when we're looking at our downtown and making sure that it's as engaging as possible. When we approved the Summit Building with 500 jobs, you know, 500 downtown is a huge economic driver for us. So I think, I think this is a great idea and project, and of course, we want to support, you know, the DCA, the Sixth DCA as much as possible. But we also want to be thoughtful with how that looks. I think economically, when we're looking at different organizations, they are getting leaner as far as in-person. So we just want to be, it's a fine line and a balance to make sure there's enough parking. But if we're talking about 50 individuals, it could increase to 75. That's a different animal than like 500 at Summit. So if we just want to look at a larger radius, I like the RP Funding idea that City Manager Scher House brought up, and I know we had all discussed that before, because there is a little more landmass out there. But it's hard to project how this is going to look in the future. So, you know, I know bricks and mortar are important, and we definitely want to have it, and we want to have it seeded here in Lakeland. But we also want to be cognizant about the numbers, and about the people and the economic impact that it would provide. I don't know that it would be something as, you know, it would be nice, but I just want to make sure that if we're partnering together, that we're being the most efficient with our dollars and with our partnerships, and making sure that there are enough people, that we're careful. You know, sometimes we plan big things, and they don't need to be that big. And sometimes we plan small things that absolutely are going to grow. So this is just a hard nut to crack, I think, for us. And I don't know that, you know, I think about the federal building that's in downtown Lakeland, that's just north of Mun Park, that is not actively engaged. There are people in and out of there, but there's a parking garage there that we cannot access, and it's almost like a ghost town. So I just want to be very cognizant of that moving forward. But I am supportive.
One comment I had there, right now, we have nine judges. We fully expect that over the next few years, we will, we're seeing the numbers that are coming in. We are on par with all of the other DCAs right now, maybe even ahead of quite a few of them that have more judges than us. So we have the fewest number of judges, just because of how it worked out. The Second has 15, some others have 11 or 12. I think that we'll probably end up in that, you know, 11 or 12 neighborhood over the next few years. We'll have some expansion just to meet our need, and then over time, a little bit. But this isn't something like a business that's going to, oh, we're going to add a new division and start exploding all at once. I mean, we'll have a pretty good idea. And whenever I sit down with you all individually, we can kind of go through some of the dynamics of how we operate, and what you might expect from it.
Thank you, Judge Stargel. Is there...
Is there, a lot of times when we see government money that comes, there's, there's strings and there's timeframes attached. Do we have specific timeframes that if we don't start making moves in one direction, they're just going to pull it and say, okay, Lakeland isn't interested, we're going to head somewhere else? Is that been, are we okay to sit and?
I don't think you're ever okay to sit on your laurels, but I, I mean, we're just, you know, this year, January 1st, we started without going into the history of what happened on the second. But, you know, there, there was definitely that building out there kind of got run down through no fault of the city. It just happened and it wasn't in a desirable area. I think we have a chance at a new start here. And I think us partnering together and finding a location could ensure that the city of Lakeland is the place for a long period of time.
Well, and there's no expectation on your part to do anything but move forward and, and get rolling.
Correct.
Thank you. Commissioner Simmons.
Thank you for appearing and making your presentation, Judge Stargell. My question also pertain to the timeframe for your, for your building.
Well, to give you an idea, the second DCA got their first funding, I think in '21, finally broke ground in '22. I think they expect to be in in '25. So if we get the money this next year, you know, depending on the location and what has to happen, you know, all the behind the scenes that you all are way more aware of than I am. But, you know, we hope somewhere that same timeframe, you know, if we could be in a new courthouse in the next four or five years, three to five years, it'd be probably a little wishful on the three-year end, but.
Thank you.
That's our hope.
You, listen, if you don't make that wishful, you don't make it happen. So, you know, that's the accelerator in a process like this. Yes, Commissioner Madden.
Thank you, Judge Stargell, for coming today. I wanted to kind of wait until the end to hear what my colleagues had to say, but I also am looking out into the room because some of the things that you mentioned of taking a siloed approach lands you in an area that's less desirable than others. And it is really important to this commission that we have a collective genius approach to our development in a time of radical growth. I see our folks from LEDC here. I see some of our community development folks here. I see Parks and Rec. And to me, it's just knowing we have investment dollars coming and the predictability that that gives other developers who are listening in, that if you just met with us on one-on-ones, you know, then the community doesn't know what's happening. And so part of the Catalyst Plan that was exciting, City Manager Scherals mentioned, Nicole Travis, kind of when she was here with CRA and led and giving us some visioning and painting some pictures, how we could cross the west-east divide. Excuse me. Tracy, if you hear me, I might need some water. You know, just because there might be people who want to build, you know, multifamily. There's folks who are building over on Lake Wire. We just have a beautiful park that's been built and, you know, how do we get pedestrians over there from that Lake Buella area? We have Veterans Park, which is so beautiful and really a lot of folks, you know, it's underused in my opinion. So, so knowing that this is coming, that we have dollars to invest and hearing this with our LEDC partners and with community development, might be hearing of developers who are interested in where to locate, making plans, just know that this commission is really interested in, like I said, P3s. When I look at parking, if anyone needs parking, well, then let's get six people who need parking and let's build a parking garage, not just kind of utilize surface parking, you know, at a minimal that we have downtown. Heritage Garage is a great example. You know, we needed parking, they needed parking, and oh, then we added some more retail and we invigorated that portion of our downtown. So I, I feel like I'm grateful that you've seen how a siloed approach in the past has not been, you know, as, as wonderful of a product at the end of the day. And we are wanting to see who else might be listening or who else might spread the word if that is in fact coming, those dollars to invest in that area, to revitalize that Lake Buella area. The RP Funding Center, we know, needs reimagining. And so it's not just what you can do with your dollars. In my opinion, it's what other people might hear and how that could grow in excitement and how we could solve several problems. I see Chuck back there, who's always looking to see how we could get a pedestrian highline going over through the Lake Wire property over to Bonnet Springs Park from the RP Funding Center. The multimodal system, station has been a topic of conversation in that area, which could bring people over. Hopefully sometime, you know, we'll get some light rail and some other things that get people here in a more efficient way with transit. So anyway, I just like to always kind of paint the bigger picture because I think that that's what our job is, is to hear from a lot of people what they're, what they're wanting to do and then, and spread the word so that it can be a collective genius approach and not just a siloed approach. So I thank you for that. I did have my colleague, Mr. Reed, ask me to ask about maybe the square footage of the building. We heard the three to five acres.
Can't tell you exactly how large ours will end up being. Maybe one of the things that, because of the legislature's new charge as far as the technology, there's also new charge as far as trying to make sure that the judges can come from throughout the district of the Court of Appeal. And we have, you know, seven art judges in Orlando, but it goes all the way to Naples and I anticipate at some point we'll have that. So, but we envision a smaller building. I think the second DCA is building somewhere around a 60,000 square foot building. The first DCA is like 110,000. So, but theirs is mostly empty and it was back when you had to have file rooms and everything else. I don't know the exact size.
The range is?
What we would end up building, but, you know, I, I would think we would be on the very low end, you know, maybe even 40, 50,000. We, we just haven't gotten to that point yet where we know exactly, but we can go up. I went and looked at the fourth DCA. It has a historic courthouse look. They're designed, I think, to have 16 or 18 judges in it and it's approximately 70,000 square feet. We don't anticipate that we're going to build a building that will house that many judges, but maybe expandable to that many judges down the road.
But a 40 to 60,000 foot, square foot range would be kind of in your expectations?
Or?
Forty?
Yeah. I think a more forty-ish.
Okay. Well, I was, I was watching you, although I couldn't see it, I was seeing you playing the violin when Commissioner Madden was talking about partnering with other entities. And I do believe that's very wise and the genius in that is that, and that's part of the reason he wanted to come this morning and talk about this, is to just raise visibility so that people that would like to have input can. And so you would want them to contact you directly?
Yeah, Charlie or myself is fine. We'll make sure that we, we sit down with you anytime you have questions and try to work for, but we just wanted to kind of start the discussion. And thank you for your comments, Commissioner Madden and Mayor. That's exactly what we wanted to do today, is let, let everybody know, you know, other than, you know, those of you that are thinking about it, had some discussions. And by the way, we also met with your lobbyist a little bit over the time, Dave Shep, and he's, he would help any way that he could as well, both on the legislative front and, you know, here with, look forward to being a good partner. And one other, I just wondered, as I was going through here, whenever I said downtown would be best, one of the things that we deal with is a lot of times is what's the definition of things? And your all's definition of downtown might be different than what mine is. You know, I'm not meaning it has to be within, you know, a close radius of right here, but, you know, RP Funding Center to me is, you know, what do you call it, downtown west? So, you know, somewhere, you know, in, in the greater downtown area as opposed to being, you know, at some point, somebody said something about the mall up there or down south. I mean, those could, you know, somewhere else could work, but our preference would probably be closer in here.
And Commissioner McCarley.
Just as a final roundout, I was thinking when you said parking and building, there's a, there's a building on the corner of Walnut and South Florida right now. Would you all be interested or do you have to build from scratch or would you be interested in maybe parcels that are, you know?
Well, I'm not here to, I, I can't speak for the court or, you know, the state as what we would be interested in at this point or not, but we're open to ideas and I think that's the exact reason we're here is let's, you know, as you all hear about things or see things, whether it's a location or building, I think probably our, our courtroom definitely has to be, start from scratch because we would want the technology and everything built into that. But we just, depending on the location and what's there and how we can make it work for us.
This is a significant project for us and an important one for the city. And this is a little unusual in a request to appear, to be able to have this kind of discussion after the fact. This was kind of our mini workshop on that to at least get us started. And so we went out of what's normal during this era and we appreciate the time you Charlie made available to us and to answer those questions that work before us and the opportunities it will create.
Thank you. I greatly appreciate all of your time, too.
Thank you very much. We have no equalization hearing, so that brings us to the Agenda Item 3A1 Ordinances, Second Reading. City Attorney Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first ordinance for second reading and consideration of adoption this morning is proposed ordinance number 22-029, an ordinance relating to zoning, making findings, approving a conditional use to allow for off-street parking as a principal use on property located at 411 East Orange Street, finding conformity with the comprehensive plan, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Second.
Motion to approve in a second, discussion by commissioners. And any discussion or questions by any members of the audience? Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Reed, I didn't see your hand. Pardon? Applicant here today on Port Levine East Orange.
I had just hoped when we admitted them previously, they're going to vote that they would have this parcel open, available, stuff like that, special, special events. Issues that I had discussed with them when they came up to for us, but thank, thank you.
Right. Any questions by any members of the audience? Roll call vote, Commissioner Simmons.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye. Unanimously passes. Item number two.
Item number two is proposed ordinance number 23-029, an ordinance relating to zoning, making findings, approving a conditional use to allow a 103-foot-tall personal wireless services facility, a cell tower on approximately .11 acres located south of Parkway Frontage Road, south and west of Beaker Boulevard, finding conformity with the comprehensive plan, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion or questions by commissioners? By any members of the audience? And this is a roll call vote, so Commissioner McCloud.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimously passes. Item three.
Item three is.
Your pace is good so far. Come in. Thank you.
Item three is proposed ordinance number 23-030, an ordinance relating to zoning, making findings, providing for a change in zoning from RA4, single-family residential to O1, low, low-impact office on approximately .88 acres located south of East Lane, east of Morel Drive and north of Parkview Place, which is 301. Finding conditions, finding conformity with the comprehensive plan, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Approval?
Second. Motion to approve in a second, discussion by commissioners. Question or questions by members of the audience? And Commissioner Simmons?
Aye.
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 Aye. Unanimously passes.
Next is proposed ordinance number 23-031, an ordinance relating to zoning, making findings, admitting to ordinance 3432 as amended to provide for a major modification to PUD, planning to allow for the development of a new two-story, 8,000-square-foot office building on property located at 1301 Grasslands Boulevard, providing conditions, finding conformity with the comprehensive plan, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion to approve in a second, discussion by commissioners. Question or questions by members of the audience? And Commissioner McCloud?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimously passes.
Next is proposed ordinance number 23-032, an ordinance of the city of Lakeland, admitting chapter 62, law enforcement, article two, police officers' benefits, Division III, city of, city of Lakeland Police Officers Retirement System, the code of, of the code of ordinances of the city of Lakeland, admitting section 62-51 definitions, admitting section 62-54 finances and fund management, admitting section 62-58 pre-retirement death, admitting section 62-61 optional forms of benefits, admitting section 62-67 minimum distribution of benefits, admitting section 62-77 military service prior to employment, admitting section 62-78 prior police service, admitting section 62-79 deferred retirement option plan, admitting section 62-8, 82.1 supplemental benefit component for special benefits, Florida statutes, chapter 185 share accounts, providing for codification, providing for severability provisions, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date.
Oh.
And a second?
Second.
All right. And a discussion by commissioners. Question or questions by members of the audience? This has all kinds of little lining changes within it and that's excellent. Commissioner?
Aye.
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 Aye. Unanimously passes.
Last of the ordinances proposed is proposed ordinance number 23-033, an ordinance relating to aviation, repealing, replacing chapter 14 aviation code of the city of Lakeland, Florida in its entirety, providing for and including new articles and sections, making findings, repealing conflicting ordinances and resolutions, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Move to approve?
Second.
A motion to approve in a second, discussion by commissioners. Commissioner Reed.
Thank you. Adam, can you come to the microphone, please? Second, just for the general public.
That's a good idea.
Can you go over briefly with this? Again, I want to make sure this is a standard boilerplate type of document we're going to be executing as well as, and hopefully it won't interfere with our future growth and, and areas of that nature.
Yes, sir, absolutely. For the record, Adam Lon is assistant airport director. When we embarked on this process, we were originally looking to tackle some issues related to hazmat and fueling at the airport and wanted to make sure that we codified our current standard policies and procedures. When we started diving into the code, we realized there was some conflicting ordinances in there, so we wanted to streamline that and make it easier for our tenants to understand what they would be held accountable for in the event that someone were to, to do something against standard best practices. We also looked at other airports in the, in the region, including Tampa, Kissimmee, Orlando, Melbourne, wanted to make sure that we weren't doing anything over and above, over and above what is required of us and also follow FAA standard guidelines as far as a compliance manual guidelines for, for airports and aviation authorities. And we did consider any impacts to future air carrier service to make sure that we included regulations there that would actually help us recruit air carrier service and make it easier for staff in the event that we do have passengers coming through our terminal in the future.
All right. Any other questions by commissioners? All commissioners need to be, note, closer to their mics as well when they're talking. I just got that message. Any others by members of the audience? Okay, seeing none. Commissioner McCloud?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Unanimously passes. Thank you for the work that's done on that because that kind of conformity takes a ton of time and the congruency provided for, for the future is very, very beneficial for everyone and the expectations are leveled. So appreciate the work that's done. That brings us to resolutions, B1.
Several resolutions for action this morning. First is proposed resolution number 23-039, a resolution of the city commission of the city of Lakeland, Florida relating to non-advalorm assessments, adopting findings of fact, adopting a non-advalorm assessment role for unpaid lock clearing and clearing, lock cleaning and clearing, and demolition non-advalorm assessments, electing to utilize the uniform method of collecting non-advalorm assessments as authorized under section 197.3632 Florida statutes for collecting said assessments, authorizing the city attorney or designated to certify the assessment role to the task collector, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Approval?
Second.
Motion to approve in second. Comments by commissioners? All right. Any by members of the audience?
We had a gentleman here earlier, but he's taken care of.
Not present, you said?
Not here.
All right.[1730.33] All right. Thank you very much for doing that. This is a roll call votes, Commissioner Simmons.
Aye.
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 Unanimously passes. Thank you.
Next is proposed resolution number 23-040, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Lakeland, Florida, relating to non-advalorm assessments, adopting findings of fact, adopting a non-advalorm assessment role for the Orangewood Community Subdivision, electing to utilize the uniform method of collecting non-advalorm assessments as authorized under Section 197.3632 statutes for collecting the assessment, authorizing the city attorney or designated to certify the assessment role to the task collector, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Approve.
Second.
Motion to approve in a second and discussion by commissioners. And any discussion or questions by members of the audience? That would be a roll call vote, and that is Commissioner McLeod.
Aye.
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 Unanimously passes.
Next is proposed resolution number 23-041, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Lakeland, Florida, relating to the non-advalorm assessments, adopting findings of fact, adopting a non-advalorm assessment role for certain lots abutting that portion of Heather Point Drive located north of Audubon Oak Circle in the City of Lakeland, electing to utilize the uniform method of collecting non-advalorm assessments as authorized under Section 197.362 Florida statutes for collecting said assessments, authorizing the city attorney or designated to certify the assessment role to the task collector, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Approval?
Second.
Motion to approve in a second. And Commissioner Davis, could you just, for benefit of members of the audience, talk about why this collection utilizing uniform method of taxes? You've been elevated to commissioner. I'm sorry. City Attorney Davis.
That's a demotion, by the way.
And I'm going to be taking your seat, sir, with no trouble.
A little bit of a background on this particular assessment?
Yes, yeah, just back. Well, no, just in general, why we do this.
For the last three resolutions, all involved assessments that need to be collected in order to offset the city's costs for various different projects. First item had to do with the loss of a lot or demolishes the structure. We see those assessments come before you on the equalization roll on a probably bi-weekly basis or bi-monthly basis. The second item had to do with maintaining some stormwater structures and right-of-way in the Orangewood Community Subdivision to help that community out. Their HOA is not an efficient. Helps them to organize and collect that assessment. Heather Point assessment was a situation where that subdivision was having problems with their stormwater system and they were having actually some roadway collapses as a result of water washing away some of the foundation for the roads out there. And it was in there, and it's just a unique situation where it was difficult to get third-party financing, so the city was able to step in and provide that upfront financing, and residents are now paying that back over a period of 10 years. And with, once again, with all three of these resolutions, we're forwarding those assessments to the task collector. Assesses will be included with the tax bills that go out in November. It's a very good way of collecting those assessments. We have a very high collection rate, and it's a very efficient way.
I appreciate you doing that, and that's important because in a neighborhood association where you may not have a strong HOA, this is a method that can correct a problem that if you can get people to get, work together, can cause an impact that over time can get addressed instead of having to live with it, and just as an encouragement to others. Commissioner Reed.
Farmer, do you have any idea what kind of interest?
On the lots cleaning and clearing, it's eight. It's probably pretty similar to that on Orangewood, and I can't tell you the exact number off the top of my head, though.
Better rate right now.
Right. All right. Any other comments or questions by commissioners? Commissioner Simmons?
Just a comment. I think the city does well with these subdivisions who, that cannot afford to actually get the financing upfront. We do a great service to these subdivisions in providing funding for them to get these infrastructures taken care of.
Good, good. Any comments or questions by members of the audience? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote, Commissioner McLeod?
Aye.
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 Unanimously passes. Thank you. Number four.
Number four is proposed resolution number 23-042, a resolution relating to cemetery fees, adopting a schedule fees for the sale of interment rights to cemetery spaces and for various other services, repealing Resolution 5778 and other resolutions in conflict herewith, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion by commissioners. Question or questions by members of the audience? Seeing none, Commissioner Simmons?
Aye.
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 Aye. Unanimously passes.
Next is proposed resolution number 23-043, a resolution relating to parks, recreation, and cultural arts, establishing fees, charges, and deposits for facility rentals, programs, and services, repealing Resolution 5779 and all other resolutions in conflict therewith, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion by commissioners. Questions, Commissioner Reed.
Donna Hay, can I have you? Do the city's residents, do they get a, is there any incentive for them to be a city resident in reference to these fees?
No, sir, all of them. We charge to say, we used to do an in-city, out-city fee, but we no longer do that, and we just basically met in the middle because we have so many in-city and out-of-city residents, so we combined them. We haven't probably done that for 15 years.
Commissioner McLeod?
Thank you, Mayor. Bob, while we have you here, can you talk a little bit about just the volume of rentals, specifically looking at Lake Crago? I know we talked about rates several years ago and just keeping an eye on those. Are we seeing the number of rentals? Is that where we ideally want to be?
Yeah, actually, our rentals are way up. We take some of our lowest buildings that are rented, for instance. Coleman Bush had 179 rentals to, so far to date, since calendar year, which is far more than we've ever had. Crago's up. I can forward you the exact numbers if you'd like, but all of our rentals are up at Lake Mirror, Crago, and everywhere right now. People are using our facilities quite a bit, which is good, but I'll be glad to forward you our latest rental numbers.
Yeah, that's great to hear. And would you attribute that to just events coming back over time, more people having in-person events as we're farther away from COVID, or just, yeah, what do you attribute that to?
I think it's both. I think it's events, everybody's coming back, and also, we have so many people coming to Lakeland as they're finding out these places that we have, and they're just using them quite a bit. We're getting a lot of new rentals we've never received before, and a lot of people come to your facilities and look at them, and they're like, wow, and your rates are very reasonable, and, you know, they start, they're locking them up. So it's been good. Like I say, Lakeland's growing, and all of our facilities that we have are busting out at the seams, all of our recreation centers, all of our athletic complexes. Our numbers are really, really up right now. I'm also on the TDC Board of Business Central Florida Marketing, and their revenues, as Commissioner Madden knows, are almost $1 million up over the previous year. We just have a lot of people using our facilities, which is a great problem to have.
Well, thank you to your staff, too, because it takes a lot of personnel and hours to maintain our facilities, and I know they do an outstanding job, so I want to thank them for that work.
I am blessed with a great group of people, no question. Thank you.
There's also, you know, some consistency in your question with the recent dashboard that I shared with you at the RP Funding Center, and how, you know, for this fiscal year, even though we've had a few fewer events, attendance is up. And so I think the quality of the facilities plus people are getting back to norm. We're seeing that impacted at the RP Funding Center and certainly in our parks facilities as well.
Thank you.
Commissioner Reed.
Thank you. And Ted, appreciate your question, it spurred another one for me.
Stay close to your mic, please.
Bob, what is the, is the occupancy greater, and about how much use do we get out of the Lake Mirror Center?
Pardon, I say that?
The Lake Mirror Center.
Usage?
Yeah.
Actually, quite a bit. The theater is used 24/7 by our community theater. They do all their practices, productions, everything right there. The auditorium, I'll be glad to, like I say, forward all of you the numbers, but the auditorium numbers are up over the previous day, each year, since COVID has risen back, pre-COVID numbers and above. Last I checked, we were at about a, oh, I want to say, you know, I averaged it out, it was like we had something going on in the auditorium every other day. That shows you how much use that building is actually used quite a bit by just a laundry list of events and users, different uses that we have. But I'd be glad to forward you the exact numbers. I don't want to lead you astray, but I know the usage is up. Michael Morats, who's behind me, who is our recreation superintendent, we go over those numbers monthly, we look at them quite often, but like I say, they're up, and I'd be glad to give you them, but it is strong. Thank you.
Commissioner Music.
Yeah, I was just going to say, as to bounce a little bit off of Commissioner McLeod's comment, is as I look through all of the event spaces that we have, I'm amazed how many I've been at over the last year. Several weddings I've been at at different places and then just different meetings, and really, a lot of it is just the quality of everything from, you know, the RP Funding Center to Crago to, you know, Lake Mirror and all these things. It's not only are they good spaces and everybody wants to be back, but they're just beautiful spaces and they're well-maintained by your staff, so.
Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you very much. I'll be glad to pass that on to the folks who really do the hard work. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Madden?
Thank you. Well, in fear that Bob might leave after this, I did, so this is not exactly germane to this particular vote, but like this vote, we recently voted for an increase of the fertilizer to use on the fields, and like, we just voted for an increase on the cemetery plots and also on the facilities rental. When we look at it, you know, it looks like a minimal, you know, increase, and sometimes we don't know unless we hear from folks if that's a strain. And so just like our attendance is up, which is something to celebrate, and obviously, these look good, unless we hear different, I recently did hear that the youth sports, you know, the PAL, not the PAL, but the other leagues, the football players, you know, a $10 fee sounds like not much to just add to help us all defray the cost of that fertilizer throughout all of our sports facilities. I did hear, though, from the Patriots League that, you know, that area, you know, often it's the coaches paying for 80% of the registrations and feeding kids after practice, and just, you know, finding it very difficult with inflation and things like that. So we might think, oh, well, it's just $10, you know, for each person to pay their share so we can have these beautiful fields. In most areas, that might not, that might be not much at all, you know, for a family to pay an extra $10. But I have heard it is quite a burden for the Patriots team in particular with just kind of, you know, the neighborhood that they're serving, and those families are seeing inflation on every side, and everything's more expensive. And I know I made an appeal to my colleagues about the PAL League, you know, having a vacancy with SROs and things like that with our kids kind of in LPD connection, but certainly, as a mom of six and five boys who played, you know, every sport they could play to keep them busy and not in trouble, I would think that all of our neighborhood kids should be playing sports as much as possible, giving them discipline, staying in shape, you know, all of the things that benefit kids to do that. So I did, that was going to be in my comments at the end of the meeting, but you wouldn't be here to give us perspective possibly, so I just thought, you know, when we vote, it's not, you know, it just looks like numbers, but now it's players who can't afford to play football, and they're in there, I think they just had their second game last Saturday, and the coaches are scrambling to do another fundraiser. They didn't anticipate, you know, they do fundraisers, but they didn't anticipate that it would, it's not just $10, now it's for the coaches $800, you know, to cover all the kids for that extra $10 fee. So I don't, I know I've spoken to our city manager and to Bob about this. He said that there's not a lot, you know, that we could do, other, it's not like they have grants in the parks and rec unless we decided, you know, to waive, and then, you know, if you waive it for this team, what about the other teams? I know it's fraught with challenges, but my suggestion was possibly even with neighborhoods who care about their neighborhood kids, that there could be a neighborhood that the Patriots fall within, and there might be grants in the neighborhood, just trying to bring this to our attention since it is a hardship and that we did vote on that. So you might have some comments, and then if, you know, we could then, if we don't need Bob anymore in the discussion, I'll bring it up at the end in my commissioner comments.
All of our youth sports have a degree, or some are fixated, they're in a better position to fund their programs than others. The successful ones do multiple fundraisers during the year. You referenced PAL, for instance, last month they had a car wash, which they raise a lot of money of. Not all of our facility, they all do different things depending on what facility they're using. With the Patriots, actually, the Patriots are in a great position because out of Southwest Complex where they play, they get to operate out of a concession stand, not only for their games, but also practices. Those are also money that they're allowed to bring in. We give them the facility for free, they don't pay a dime, they don't pay any utility bills or anything whatsoever, so the, really, the $10 fee is pretty nominal, and we do give them, we make it as cheap as possible, actually, no cost, so that they're able to, every dime that they raise goes directly back into their organization. We also give them storage area, which PAL, as you know, they have six storage areas, I believe, for all their equipment that they pay monthly fees on. With the Patriots, they have that building there, they don't have to pay that. So we feel that, like I say, we've given a lot back to the Patriots to be able to help support them in the way of facility that we have on hand. We do this, we're like, say, we work with each of the organizations depending on what their situation is, to put them in the best financial position as possible. The Patriots have been no different. Actually, we give more to the Patriots than we do any of the organizations, to be honest with you.
Right, so, and I just wanted you to hear that from the Parks and Rec side, there, unless we waive the fee, you know, that's not, you know, something that they have in their budget. So just more of looking to, if this is something that the Patriots in particular do struggle, or there might be other neighborhood teams that struggle that we haven't heard from, you know, I would like for, you know, if we could hear, I don't know who, Jonathan used to be the Neighborhood, Neighborhood Association, but is, who is now?
Jonathan.
Oh, it still is? Oh, okay, okay. Great. So just, just maybe, you know, knowing if it's not Parks and Rec, or if we, you know, I don't know what my colleagues would think about waiving the fee for them, but, you know, what maybe else we could be thinking about in terms of, because, like you said, you're not charging them anything, it's not Parks and Rec's fault, but they do have quite a hefty registration fee to pay for all the pads and the helmets and all of the, you know, the things that all sports, you know, have, so.
Yes, ma'am.
And if I may, just to tie on to that, you know, that is another part of the challenge is, and this is, I want to make this mainly, you know, for the public, because there's oftentimes confusion about whether these are city leagues that the city runs, and they're not. These are all independent leagues, they all run their own leagues, they run their own teams, they have different registration fees, and some of that can be, you know, some choices that one league made over another, so finding consistency there could be a challenge, but just so, again, so that there's not confusion, that it's not the city that determines what those registration fees are, because they're, those leagues are independent. We provide the facilities, as has been discussed, and now there's a fee because of the increased cost and all fertilizer and maintenance of that.
And many times, even within those leagues, there are people who help other people. That's a nice part of community, you know, anyway. Commissioner McCarty?
I think it would be really helpful, and this is for the city manager's office, if we could have, as a city commission, all the in-kind that we provide, the City of Lakeland provides, to organizations, because I don't know that we always see that, so, you know, Bob just was sharing about the Patriots and what's been in-kinded to them, that would be really helpful information, because I do think when we're approached by smaller groups, we may not know the whole lay of the land of what, you know, is cost prohibitive for them, but what we've already done. So I think that would be really helpful, just to see across the board what's in-kinded out, especially within our, our event spaces as well as for leagues and things like that, because I know we do a lot of really good work, and I think that that's really important, and it would help me, I don't know about my peers, but it would really help me as a commissioner to know what we do do, so that when I am asked questions like Commissioner Madden received, I'd be better well-versed in that, to respond.
That actually would be great as sections within this chart.
In the spreadsheet.
Because then you could do it by the each area, just as you could build it over the course of the year.
No, we could be, we can break it down into all the organizations, whether they're be athletic-based or arts-based or whatever, so that way you guys could have a much better look at what we, you guys, we all give out. If that's okay with you.
You do a marvelous job of this, and we're so grateful for the leadership you both provide in that regard, and so this isn't undermining, we're coming alongside. I'm sure that if, at some level, you'd probably think these rental rates are a little low for the rooms, you know, compared to what is available in the marketplace, but that's also because of the balance of the teeter-totter for community availability, and so grateful for the way you were.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
And I thank you, city manager, for your leadership in all of this, because I know sometimes we're quick to call up individuals, and really, our direction ought to be a little bit more towards you in terms of asking the question than if you want to call up the staff, you could. Commissioner Reed?
Thank you.
Thank you. And of course, again, from seeing the other communities around, I think our fees are competitive, to say the least. And I don't think you'll find facilities any better condition and, than we have. And commend you. I think it's a great job. It's, I get recommend, I get accolades on your department all the time. And, and the fees that we're charged are nominal. And I have relatives come in and they want to go to L-E-R-C, stuff like that, and they just think it's cheaper than dirt, you know, to come here. So thank you very much.
That's the encouragement for next year's.
Right. I'd also like to add that I think we do an excellent job with regard to providing these parks and recreational facilities for our youth, you know, when I, again, you know, when I see our youth headed in the wrong direction. And we have alternatives such as recreational teams involved in sports that, that does well for our youth and for our city.
Thank you. Okay. Any comments by any members of the audience? This is a roll call vote and I think it is your turn.
Aye.
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 Yes.
Aye. Aye. Unanimously passes. Thank you for the work done on that.
All right, next is proposal for resolution number 23-044, a resolution authorizing execution of an amendment to a multi-year grant agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation to add state and local funding for upgrading to a category three instrument landing system at Lakeland-Lender International Airport, adopting findings provided an effective date.
For approval.
Second. Second, okay. And which second did you get on that, Kelly? Okay, great. Music, all right. Sorry about that. Discussion by commissioners. Any by members of the audience? Adam, we appreciate your patience being here. Commissioner McLeod.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
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 Aye. Unanimously passes.
All right, the last resolution is relating to the energy system revenue bonds. As part of the process for that, we have to certify to the purchasers of the bonds that we've complied with Sunshine Law requirements and that there aren't any conflicts, conflicts of interest under, under state law. So I'm going to pass around a certificate that everyone needs to sign. Approximately one and a half page title that our bond council drafted for us.
In their comprehensive.
It is proposed resolution number 23-045, a resolution authorizing the issuance of City of Lakeland, Florida Energy System Revenue Refunding Bonds, Series 2023 and one or more series in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $170 million. The finance improvements to the CD Magnetos Jr. Power Plant and other capital improvements for the issuer's electric system to the extent provided herein to currently refund all or a portion of the issuer's outstanding variable rate energy system revenue bond Series 2022 to pay the cost of issuance related to such 2023 bonds, providing for certain terms of the 2020, 2023 bonds, establishing a form of the 2023 bonds, authorizing the mayor or such other officer and clerk to approve, execute, deliver on behalf of the issuer a registrar and paying agent agreement and appointing the Bank of New York Mellon Trust Company, N.A., as registrar and paying agent for the 2023 bonds, authorizing the mayor or such other officer and clerk to execute and deliver on behalf of the issuer an escrow deposit agreement and appointing the Bank of New York Mellon Trust Company, N.A., as escrow agent, authorizing the mayor or such other authorized officer to appoint a verification agent, authorizing the mayor or such other authorized officer on behalf of the issuer to approve the, to approve the form of a preliminary official statement with respect to the 2023 bonds and to deem said preliminary official statement final for purposes of SEC Rule 15C 2-12, and authorizing the mayor or such other authorized officer and the clerk to execute, deliver on behalf of the issuer an official statement, authorizing the mayor or such other authorized officer with the advice of the issuer's financial advisor to establish the principal amounts, the interest rates, redemption terms, maturity schedule of the 2023 bonds within certain parameters to award the sale of the 2023 bonds to the underwriter described herein on a negotiated basis and establish the conditions to such sale, approving the form of a bond purchase agreement, authorizing the mayor or such other authorized officer and the clerk to approve, execute, deliver on behalf of the issuer a disclosure dissemination agent agreement with respect to the 2023 bonds and approving Digital Assurance Corporation, LLC, as disclosure dissemination agent thereunder, authorizing certain issuer officials to take actions deemed necessary or advisable in connection with any of the foregoing, providing for other matters relating thereto, authorizing the termination of certain interest rate swaps, authorizing proper officials to do all other things deemed necessary or advisable in connection with such terminations and providing an effective date.
Moved to approve.
Second.
And a second. Discussion by commissioners.
I've, I've got one. I think I asked a question on the general study meeting that want to know the percentage of our debt service to the revenue for the city of Lakeland. I know this does, actually doesn't have nothing to do with this particular. But did we ever get an answer on that?
Probably Jeff Sterns would be the best to answer that.
Certainly get it later.
I, I think we were going to get an email back on that after he had taken a look. Let's, let's let that work so that we're working on a real, real number instead of.
That's fine.
Commissioner Reed.
Again, for the general public, I would ask our representative come up and give us a brief edition of what we're going to do here today. Prove it with our purse.
So we, we have both Gina Jacoby from Lakeland Electric Finance and Jeff Sterns, who presented on Friday. And, and so we may be able to, are we ready to answer that question?
Yes, I believe the question was what percent is our debt service coverage as a percent of our budget? And it's about 10%.
Right. Other questions?
And Commissioner Reed, you were just wanting an overview on these bonds?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Again, so, yes.
Mr. Sterns, can you help us with that?
Happy to do so. As we talked about in agenda session, this is about $169 million bond issued in total, and that's the proceeds that we'll raise. About $81 million of that is for projects, things that we're going to build. And 88 million of it is to refund the variable rate debt that Palmer mentioned when he was reading the title. So the $81 million includes $59 million to finish the installation of the new generating units. $11 million is for the Hamilton substation and the associated transmission that goes with that. And then there's $11 million for miscellaneous transmission, distribution and building projects for Lakeland Electric. The $88 million of refunding, literally we're going to retire a like amount of variable rate debt that's on the books of Lakeland Electric now. There's some associated interest rate swaps that go with that that will terminate and will replace all that complicated structure with just new regular fixed rate debt, much simpler. It will save a little bit of money, about $1 million in debt service over time. So that's in a nutshell what the transition or the transaction does.
And the impact for lenders?
I'm sorry, say again?
On eliminating variable debt, the impact.
Yeah. I mean, variable rate debt obviously has to be reissued frequently. It varies. We have some complicated interest rate swap agreements which hedge that so that it kind of fixes that obligation. It would be easier to have regular fixed rate debt, but you had to take out the old debt and the old swaps have to be in a certain interest rate environment. There's multiple kind of markets that move over time, not always in the same direction. We're in the position right now where we can finally simplify the debt service structure, get rid of the old variable rate debt, get rid of the interest rate swap agreements and replace it with fixed rate debt, which the rating agencies much prefer for us.
And not only will it save us money, it'll give us more consistent way to forecast what we're going to start debt.
It will be simpler and less complicated for sure and save a little bit of money in the process.
And improve our rating agency view. So all of that's great. Any other questions by commissioners? By any members of the audience? This is a roll call vote, so Commissioner McLeod.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
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 Unanimously passes. Aye. Sorry. Now unanimously passes. All right, that we are, have no community redevelopment business to do, so we don't have to convene as that board. And so we will move to our city manager, 5A.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one item for presentation this morning. This is regarding recommendation for reimbursable agreement with the Federal Aviation Administration for a VOR relocation siding study out at the airport. This would be in the amount of $70,815.25. This would be to complete a second siding study related to the relocation of the Very High Frequency Omni-Directional Range, or VOR, station at the airport. The term of the agreement is for 36 months. The VOR is a ground-based electronic aircraft navigation system. The siding study is needed due to the proposed new runway, which is included in the airport's master plan. Lakeland Electric is seeking to install new power transmission lines along the northern side of Pipkin Road. And so the FAA then requires this new siding study. As Lakeland Electric would otherwise incur significant costs to do the same, this is a much more cost-effective method to complete the new siding study, which again is required and needed for FAA compliance. Staff is recommending approval of the non-federal limited design and implementation reimburse, reimbursable agreement with the FAA in the amount as presented. And this will not require an appropriation to accommodate this request from LE.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve in a second. Discussion by commissioners. Any members, discussion by any members of the audience? This particular VOR, because we're located in the center of the state, is one of the primary VORs that are used by planes that cross Florida. By the way, just as a. That would be a roll call vote, starting with Commissioner Simmons.
Aye.
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 Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimously passes. Either ma'am, items, sir, at all, from you, verbal or otherwise?
No, sir. Other, maybe then just quickly to kind of reiterate already the commission's comments to our communication staff for the good work on a very complicated project here in the commission chambers. And this will certainly help the broadcast capabilities that, that our staff has. So thank you to Kevin and Andrew and everyone else involved.
Thanks again. And, and Andrew also.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you. All right. City Attorney Ordinance's first reading none. And that brings us to B miscellaneous reports, B 123. We did on consent. We have no comments from the finance director, so we begin our utility 8A one portion of the meeting.
Good morning. Ramona Sirianni for the city attorney's office. The first item that we have is an agreement with Effie Moran Inc., Special Hazard Systems. This is for the purchase of a fire protection system for the Rice project. It's a fire detection and suppression system, which is a vital part of ensuring the safety of the personnel and the equipment out at the plant. In April, the city's purchasing department issued an invitation to bid seeking qualified contractors to design, furnish, manufacture, deliver and install a complete water mist fire detection and suppression system for the Rice project. Upon review, there was only one actual contractor that submitted a bid, that is Effie Moran. The city staff evaluated that along with our city's consulting engineers, Sergeant and Lendy on the project and deemed that Moran was a responsive, responsible bidder for the project. The equipment is scheduled to be delivered in April of 2024 upon city commission approval. Moran will commence the installation and the project is, is anticipated to be completed by October of 2024. The total bid price that Moran initially submitted was $2,633,035. However, upon evaluation of the proposal, city staff determined it would be advisable to procure a five-year extended or a warranty, an additional five-year warranty. That's a comprehensive warranty that covers all of the material and labor defects in, in the event anything occurs if there is a problem with the, that equipment. That was an additional cost of $39,800. That brings the total cost for the fire suppression and protection system to $2,102,835. That is, that amount is included in Lakeland Electric's bond for, or Rice project budget, which was pursuant to the bond issuance. And we would ask for your favorable approval.
Motion to approve.
Moved for approval.
Second.
Second. Okay. A motion to approve in a second. And the, any discussion by commissioners on this? Commissioner Reed.
Is this system going to be a foam, a dry or a liquid?
I would have to defer to our, our expert, David, on that, on the specifics of the system.
Dave Holden, our project manager. It is going to be a, a wet system, but it's going to be a dry tube. So it's a water mist system, nitrogen over water. So instead of a traditional sprinkler system that's wet pipe, this is dry until it's needed and then it'll freshen, provide a water mist. The advantage of a water mist of the water system is you don't use as much water and also you don't have as much cleanup and secondary damage if the water system goes off.
I presume that you can do it in sections or once it goes off, the whole system going to go off?
It'll be by engine. The two areas that we're covering is our lube oil system and also the engine itself. We worked with the risk department and, and our underwriters and we bounced the different ideas off of them of what they wanted to see. Previous Rice projects did not include a suppression system, but our underwriters wanted to include that. And so that's the way we went. And so like I said, if we detect a fire around an engine, all the engines will shut off and then the fire system will extinguish that engine that actually had the detection.
Is there, would there be a necessity for a backup of any sort? Or is there, if, if, what do you, what do you do in that case?
The, the, the water, the water supply that we have is engineered to sufficiently put out any kind of fire. I mean, with the amount of lube oil that we have, the underwriters were concerned that the lube oil would catch on fire. But the advantage of the, on the Rice engines, when we shut them off, we basically remove all the heat sources. And so the, there's not a whole lot to burn in the area. There's not a whole lot of combustibles.
Questions, sir? Thank you very much. Other questions or comments? Any by members of the audience? Roll call vote, Commissioner Simmons.
Aye.
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 Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimously passes. Thank you very much. Next item, too.
Second item we have is a change order to the agreement with GE International for Larson Unit 8's combustion turbine inspection and repair. In December of 2022, the city commission approved a sole source agreement with GE for the combustion turbine inspection and repair on Larson 8 that was supposed to be completed in spring of 2023 for a total cost of $643,604. And I think, if you recall, on Friday, I just want a point of clarification that that spring outage was actually deferred now to the fall. So the additional cost related to this change order is, is something that was determined not during the actual inspection, but in related inspections. So that spring outage was deferred because of the forced outage of Unit 5. So that spring outage was deferred because of the forced outage of Unit 5. So I just wanted to make that point of clarification for the commission. But the additional change order is in the amount of $217,750. That will include a need for combustion turbine exhaust tubes for replacement, as well as some additional minor inspection and electrical testing. The majority of that cost is related to the parts, equipment, including the procurement of a crane as part of the project and labor. Upon approval, that inspection will take place in, during Unit 8's fall 2023 outage that would occur between October 2nd and October 18th. And again, that total cost of work is $217,750. That is included in Lakeland Electric's FY '23 budget, and we'd ask for your favorable approval.
Second. Motion to approve in a second, discussion by commissioners? Any discussion or questions by members of the audience? So roll call vote, Commissioner Reed.
Yes.
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 Aye.
Yes. Unanimously passes.
I know, I just wanted to.
All right. That, we have no other requests appear by the audience. The third item, of course, is always on consent. So that brings us to mayor, members of the city commission for comments. Audience, I passed on. Are there any audience members that wish to make any statements at all on any topic whatsoever? Yes, come up, come up, Mr. Conley. Certainly glad our mayor, Protrim, got me on that one.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. First, I'd like to commend you on going through a very smooth proclamation process. I think our Polk County Public School Board could take some lessons from you guys. I think they're going to have a pretty chaotic session tomorrow night just on proclamations, which really shouldn't be an issue. Secondly, it was in yesterday's paper, just wanted to remind everybody that on August 28th will be the 60th anniversary of Dr. King's march, I have a dream speech, and with it being the 60th anniversary, I would just recommend that you go back and read through that, especially the beginning. We have a lot of public officials that like to cherry pick off that speech, but if you don't take it from the beginning, you really miss the point. And one final thing, we go through the 60th anniversary, coming up in November, it'd be the 100th and 60th anniversary of President Lincoln's Gettysburg Address, and with all the chaos that we kind of have going on through our country and our political system, it would be good to go back and read through that speech also, because it's a, bringing the country back together type thing, and we really need that, so, thank you.
Great input, sir, and we'll look at how we can do that with some intentionality as well, okay? Commissioner McCarty.
Just to add to that really quick, there's a podcast I listen to regularly called, there are two, by John Meacham. One's called Hope Through History, and one is called It Was Said. And It Was Said does a real good view of Dr. King's speech in the March on Washington, and has a lot of context surrounding it that's really, really interesting. I highly recommend it. It's on anywhere people can get their podcasts. And in addition to that, I think there is one on Lincoln as well and Hope Through History, but those are two specific podcasts by the author, John Meacham, and they're very interesting. But thank you for bringing that to our attention.
And thank you for that input. All right, who would like to begin? Would you like to begin with any comments?
Yes, I have to give a shout out. You know, I think we take for granted, you know, we signed off on this giant bond again today, and these numbers with zeros, just kind of, oof, you know, you just, you just say aye, or yes, and then you go on, but the folks behind the scenes, you know, we get to see some of them, you know, Gina's here, and you know, Lakeland Electric folks. But I tell you what, we were at the Florida Women in Energy Conference, and you can just think, well, you know, we go to Florida Municipal Electric Association, and I serve on American Public Power Association at a national level, but those are just public power, so, you know, munis, we're, you know, the third largest in the state, so 260,000 folks we serve with electricity, still very small compared to your Emera out of Nova Scotia who owns TECO, and your Nextera in Florida Power and Light, largest in the country. And this little Florida Women in Energy has the C-suite executives from all of those big players, and they are all scrambling to figure out what to do next in a 75% natural gas state and how to go into a cleaner energy future. And so it is a huge deal. I mean, this is like next to getting to the moon here. You know, we can think it's cool that Elon Musk is sending, you know, rockets, but we got to figure out how to have the rocket fuel be made out of clean hydrogen, and we've got to figure out how to get ships and transportation and everything that we have just taken for granted to just flip a switch and turn the lights on in here. We have to have reliability, and we've had reliability for over 100 years, and affordability. And to just strand 60-year assets that cost billions of dollars to just go to some nascent technology is not what anyone's looking to do. And yet there's, you know, there's political pressure, and there's mandates coming from the federal level, and, you know, not all of those have been in the utility space for 100 years. You know, they have great ideas. And so it's incumbent upon, I think, this body, our utility committee, our legislators at the state level, our federal, our congress, like, you know, congressmen and women, to know that this is the direction the world is heading, and the problem's not solved. There, there is, the geographic diversity of our country, if you can think about, like, we don't have hydro here, but the West depends on hydro. Canada has, has had much cleaner energy because they have hydro capacity. Nuclear, people were scared of nuclear, but now everyone's like, whoa, we need nuclear. It makes a boatload of energy in a small geographic location, a couple acres of nuclear, and you can really provide a lot of people energy, but then you need to have transmission. When you get a big generation power plant, you've got to have big transmission lines to carry that over long distances, and, and then all the transmission across the country is like trying to find an iPhone plug versus your Samsung plug. They, they're, they're not all consistent, and so there is just, it is, it could be the Wild West if people just start to answer the door-to-door salesman to, to put solar panels on their roof independently, kind of like what kind of toaster or what kind of oven do they want. You know, the utilities need to lead the way. They're the ones that have provided this for 100 years, and so they are, they're all looking for the next best thing. They're looking to see demonstration projects, they're piloting solar plus electrolysis to see if we can make some green hydrogen. It's just really exciting to be a part of the conversation and know that here in Lakeland, Florida, you know, when you flip on your light, that happens beautifully and affordably, and it has for a long time, and, oh, we talked about our Parks and Rec. Our Parks and Rec would not look like what they look like without that revenue that we get from having a publicly-owned electric utility, but we want to make sure that we can stay affordable and that we have those dividends. And so it, I just feel like sometimes, you know, we could take for granted, all those employees over there at Lakeland Electric, that they, they are, you know, heroes. They are on the cusp of finding new innovations in emerging technology and what to do, and we've got these Rice engines that are going to be coming this fall that are injectable with green hydrogen, which, by the way, we don't even make yet. And so, super cool stuff's happening. It's great that we get to have our team of women participate in that. I know Gina's been on a panel at Florida Women in Energy before. This year, we had Cindy Clemens, who presented to our commission about the microgrid, the residential microgrids that we're, we've got a grant in for. She was able to serve on a panel with that, with the block energy folks and some others who are from TECO, who have already have the successful pilot over in Y-Mama. She just did a great job, Cindy Clemens. We also had Catherine Lacy, and she's in charge of kind of what Kevin does for the city. She's got to figure out how to tell our story, how to let people know the complexity of going to solar and what it looks like residential solar versus solar farms, and, and what we're doing as a, a utility. She's got to craft the messaging for Lakeland Electric. And Hannah Ball, a bright young woman there, you know, just looking around the room and seeing females in the executive C-suite positions in these big, major utility provider companies is very inspirational. We had Cory Bush stood out, and he got to feel like what it used to be like for women to sit in a, an energy conference. Cory was one of the few men that were there representing to find out more about customer service and his role. And then his daughter Lauren actually was an intern, and she said, wow, you know, I'm, I'm in, going, getting my masters in nursing, but who knew, like, electricity could be so exciting? And just to see that it is, it is, it's an exciting time, you know, for everyone in this space. And I will also say that, you know, they had HR folks, and so I know we're, you know, our city manager's been doing a rate study, you know, for all city of Lakeland workers because we kind of got a little behind with COVID and trying to get, you know, creative alternatives for, you know, remote work and those things, but I, I also would appeal that Lakeland Electric is unique, you know, that it is, it operates more like a business, and to get engineers and to talent when it is such an exciting, you know, time, think about that. Think about trying to get quality employees at Lakeland Electric when they're competing for all of these other big companies in the space. So I just, you know, want to always keep that front of mind. I feel privileged and honored to be able to, to attend some of these things as the liaison for Lakeland Electric, but y'all would be, you know, so proud of our women who were there at the Florida Women in Energy Conference, and they're just doing a great job. It's exciting, and I'm sure they might, you know, maybe at an upcoming utility committee meeting, share some of the things that they've learned and heard as well. But I just had to use my time to give them all a shout out. I also did, you know, mention the, the Patriots Appeal. I, I did feel like, you know, it was kind of the case that we do a lot of in-kind, and I like that to be heard, but, you know, I also know that we have a generous, you know, philanthropic community, and some people just don't even know there's needs. And so I, I did, you know, I, I haven't been to a neighborhood association meeting, I know Commissioner McCarty goes to those a lot. You know, I think they're, they're doing also some attempts at grants and fundraising. I just can't think of a better thing, like, maybe if it's concessions is what they, you know, help pays their needs, you know, the neighborhoods could all go support their teams and go spend a lot of money in the concession stand, or maybe there'd be grants, but I did, I did want to say that that has become a burden, and I know, you know, other parents who are parent coaches, I see our own Kevin Cook here, he knows how it is with lacrosse buying sticks and helmets, and for kids to give them a chance to play, it's a, it's a big deal. It's expensive, and not everyone, you know, has the extra cash to do it. So I don't know if any of you have anything else to say about that, or if it's just, maybe we could just be planting the seed and ask the city manager to check in with neighborhoods to see if there is any grant or any way to kind of help with that. And I think, oh, and then the youth council app closes on Friday, I think it's 25th. Kelly, I'm looking to you. And so anyone else who wants to put their application in by Friday, and then I think Kelly's going to give the list to all of us so that we can each have our two to put forward, and, and I'll also look through it, and if there's, if, if any of my colleagues have questions, you know, about any of the candidates, I, I guess I could, I wouldn't be able to talk to them about that. Okay, so just.
At agenda study.
Oh, would we know? Oh, at agenda study, we can talk about it. Yeah, because if you, right, if you don't know any of them, it would be difficult to just randomly pick two. So we'll, we'll talk about it at agenda study, the next agenda.
How many do we have, Kelly?
Last I heard was four. Had multiple, but a lot of them lived outside the city limits.
I did talk to several this weekend who said that they were applying, but they thought it was adult application because the, the modified one wasn't.
Not that fixed. Thank you, Kevin.
Yes, so I said, no, it, it just, it's been modified, so I sent a couple of them, the modified one that has the school and the references. So I do know that there seems to be some people who reached out who are in the process of filling those out as well.
Just for clarity, their home address has to be within the city limits? That's correct. Not LE's? That's correct. Okay.
So another question would be, are we just dealing with the two for each, for each of us? So that would be 14, is that right?
Yes, and then it says up to 15, so there could be, you know, if we got 15 applications, you know, then we could add that, that last one to fill the 15. That, the ordinance says 15 total.
So we're supposed to fill out the application or get the applicants to pull out the application and get that application to you, Kelly? Is that right?
Yes, sir.
By Friday?
Yes, and it's all under the city clerk's office, just like when you're running for office.
On the webpage, they can go find it there.
And it's not very lengthy. You just fill it out like you would for a municipal board or committee, and then the clerk's office will collect them all and then share those with us, probably, maybe.
If you know someone who you think would be good, have them call us, we'll send it to them.
Okay, okay. So I'm assuming that all seven of us will have at least two, but just in case someone who, who doesn't provide two names or two applicants, would that be opportunity for other applicants?
Well, yes, so.
Provide four, if you'd like.
Yeah, you don't have to actually come with any two, because there might be, I mean, there's going to probably be at least one apiece in the batch that is already applying. So we want to leave ourselves open-minded to, you know, whoever is applying to, you know.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up again. Commissioner Reed.
Stephanie always give a great report of it. It's interesting, I've been reading about the power, of course, I guess there's some stuff about plasma batteries potentially coming out, and I guess magnetic power as well, but they're, they may be too expensive at this point in time. And she brought up interesting times, starting tomorrow from the 22nd to the 24th, in Africa, they're having the BRICS conference.
Just on the youth, on the youth council, Commissioner Madden, I did send the information to the mayor's Hispanic Advisory Council, to the chair, to try and do a final push just in my own network and youth groups, and trying to think, okay, how can we, this last week, get as many applicants as we can? So, yeah, just a reminder to us, I feel like, the more I think about it, I realize, oh, maybe there's a, a group who, they have students who are involved who would be interested but don't know. I know the city limit provision is prohibitive for some, because I've thought of a couple of students, and then I realized that they're outside of Lakeland, but I'm curious to see how many we have at the deadline, and I know we said this is our first year, so we will, we'll walk before we run, but it's a start, and just thank you for leading on that.
City limit thing is at your discretion. That's just what we started with. That can be changed if you want.
Excuse me, I didn't, I didn't quite understand you. Could you repeat that?
City limit restriction is, is really at your discretion. That's what we started with as we're kind of feeling our way through this first year.
Okay.
That can be changed.
Okay, but the, the number of, of participants within the youth council program, they're set at 15? Okay.
And my thought was maybe we see the number of applicants at the deadline, and, and then if we need to make any changes and broaden the residency requirement, then, you know, we could look at that.
And I did, I did want to mention, so I went to the Florida Lake City's Youth Conference Day, and to, just to compare notes with the other folks, some of them, it's an after-school program, and it's a large group of kids and has a big funding, like, they go to Tallahassee for Florida Lake City's Youth Day and ride a bus, I mean, all of those things, spend the night. And then there's smaller groups that are actual advisory capacity, that use sunshine laws, have their own email addresses, and are, you know, scrutinized, you know, like we are with regard to the sunshine. So there's a wide array of, of ways you can do it. You know, my goal this year is to be educational in nature and just to kind of like Citizens Academy, that, you know, we already do, you know, have them show up and teach them about the different departments of the city, have some walking tours to the, you know, fire station and to the police station, from, you know, this being the headquarters meeting central. You know, more of that this first year, just to kind of, since we don't have a budget, and just see how that goes.
I think it's great, by the way, I really do. I think it'll be a great opportunity for young people to learn how government actually works, so that'd be great. I'm, I'm excited about it, actually.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, if there are none, we are adjourned.